The name of the grant right now. One of the grants, we had to push in half of the money into fiscal year nineteen. And so that's what you're seeing going on there is additional grant money from the S U D. Grant revenue, I want to say it's SOAR grant, or is that what it is, Kathleen? Look at you.
Eight opioid response grant.
That's it. So that is grant revenue that we got in fiscal year eighteen that what we didn't use goes into fiscal year nineteen. So that's what you see happening there. So the net of that is about three point three million dollars reduction. So going down to expenses, a couple of things going on here that you'll see. You see, there's a pretty material change there from a core provider adults expense perspective. It actually goes up by about eight point two million. So when we drafted the budget, we had budgeted for the reduction in administration related to taking back both of the vocational and residential and C L S contracts. And during our contract negotiation process, we negotiated with some providers to have a transition period, as well as some providers, we had to adjust the amounts a bit based on people who were in self-determined arrangements and that were not included in the original calculation. So what you're seeing there, that increase is us putting that administration amount back into their budgets for fiscal year nineteen. That is, that's the biggest change to expenses, which is in an increase. You can see A B A and crisis and acute care go down just slightly. And then core provider kids was adjusted slightly as well, but that was based on a change in the service model rate. We did adjust, and that was after the budget was done. So you see that go up just slightly. Housing services, that's that, the C H N grant that Mark Craig came and presented on. That was not included in the original budget, so that's being added here. And then in addition to that, there were some substance use expenses that needed to be added that were identified after the budget was done as well. The bottom line there that has residential and C L S, you see that at eighty one point eight million. That has just a slight increase of about a million dollars, getting us to eighty two million for the fiscal year. That's just some adjustments being made as we shift between providers and between the contracts and things like that. So you see the material change in expenses is about seven point four million dollars. So expenses went up significantly compared to revenue going down for a total of about ten million dollars change from budget amendment one from the original budget. So what that means is, if you want to go ahead and flip to the next page. What that means is, when we look at this from a fund source perspective, and this is the document that I try to help everybody understand the restrictions and the how money comes in versus how it's spent and things like that, is that from a fund source perspective, things shift a bit. So even in the original budget, we did still have a Medicaid deficit. So that's been a continuing issue going on for the last several years. We did have a material Medicaid deficit last fiscal year. And I know we do have a meeting scheduled to talk about the year end results. But that, that change to budget amendment one makes that Medicaid deficit larger. And then you can see that for other fund sources, we do have a surplus of about five point four million dollars. So again, we, we have some wheelroom related to how we use some of those funds, the other local funds. We can use how we choose to, but, but from just a strictly Medicaid revenue versus expense, you can see the, the deficit of about twenty one million dollars. Can you scroll down just a little? So then if you move down to substance use funding, you can see that we are spending all of our block grant money, which was actually a lot of hard work there at the beginning, just because there Healthy Michigan came on and block grant was not reduced like general fund was. So we are spending all and a little more now. But you can see that P A two money, we are not spending all of it. And you can see that SOAR grant as well is in there. So we have a total surplus of substance use revenue of about two point one million dollars. So all of that combined is a deficit of about thirteen point four million. So one of the questions I've already gotten, which from one of the board members was, what do we, what do we do with this? Now what? So now that we have this in place, and this is a much better idea of where we're at for fiscal year nineteen, and it gives us, gives us a much better idea of how things are looking. One, we have a meeting scheduled with the department, I believe, on May first to talk to them about this. And then in addition to that, after we have that meeting, we'll start to talk about what our recommendations are for you as the board to start and talk to you about that as it relates to how to handle this for the remainder of fiscal year nineteen. So that's just, it's just a little, not, we're not quite there yet as far as what the recommendation will be. Because once this is approved, then we can start talking about what this means, what the department thinks about the continued issue that not only we are having, but from what I saw, I think seven of the ten P I H Ps are having the same issue. So I want to hear from them a little bit about what they, what if anything they plan to do about it yet in this fiscal year. And then we'll start to talk about what our recommendations are related to the remainder of this fiscal year and how we handle this. Do you all have for me?
Any questions? Mr. Rubin?
Yeah, we requested it, just based on now that we see what's going on in nineteen, we've requested to chat with them about it.
Yep.
Any other questions? I have one about the DAB. I know that we were able to make some headway with the department in terms of acknowledging what was actually happening. Has it, has their, the way that they've been doing processing the applications, has that changed so that we would stop putting people into the Healthy Michigan that should be going into the DAB category?
Oh, that's really done at the D H S level, the, like, the D H S worker level. So I know that we, for those that we help fund, we've made them aware of that specific issue. The unfortunate part is that it's just easier to get on Healthy Michigan. There's no asset test, there's no documentation. So when the, when the department did recognize the issue, they did put that sixty million supplemental into the budget. That continued into fiscal year nineteen, but as you know, it nowhere near covered the loss that has been received. So the C M H Association has been advocating with the, with both the legislature and with the department related to these continued issues that now two thirds of us are, even more than that, are experiencing related to revenue. So that's why I said we requested a meeting, because I want to hear what they have to say directly about this and what if anything they plan to do in fiscal year nineteen. So we don't do anything preemptively without hearing from them.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Will be for approval at next week's board meeting.
Thank you. Next presentation is Ms. Kovat doing the annual plan report, part three.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As you can see, I've asked Dr. Lawson to join me in this presentation. This is the third part of the F Y eighteen year end report, and that ended in September of two thousand eighteen. We have seven strategic priorities in the F Y sixteen through F Y eighteen strategic plan, which ended last September. We've already reviewed the first five priority areas, so we'll be talking about integrated healthcare and health and wellness as well as supports and services. So in the first area, Nicole actually is going to talk all about integrated healthcare. So if you'll move slides forward, thank you. I'll turn it over to her.
Good afternoon. Looking at the goal that we have up right now in terms of care coordination. Last year, we implemented our complex case management program, which you all saw an in-depth presentation on at the last committee of the whole. So we're very proud that we achieved that, and we continue to utilize our survey data to identify high-risk or underrepresented individuals. And we do active outreach and engagement in the form of letters and things like that when we find individuals, when we run our stratification data, inviting them into the complex case management program. I'm also going to make a shameless plug that individuals can refer themselves, and anyone that cares for or loves that individual can also make a referral. And all of that information is readily available on our website. Looking at the next goal. Emergency department and hospital visits, looking at objective one, coordinating our meaningful data and looking at target areas for emergency room boarding and hospital access. So we continue to collect that data and demonstrate that we are indeed successful in our efforts to divert from emergency rooms and hospitals, of course. Those are still challenges that we work on. I believe Matt Owens had presented on some of those challenges not too long ago to the board as well. But certainly, we need ongoing provider development in this area and ongoing partnerships with the hospitals themselves as well. Looking at the second objective, with inpatient diversions using A C T, C R U, sorry, crisis residential unit and mobile crisis teams. The A C T teams are required by the department to be part of the pre-admission screening process. We are in the process right now of developing the workflow and what that will look like. Because of the Parity tool, if, if folks can reach back in their memories and remember when I presented on Parity, we've actually gone in together with eight other P I H Ps and purchased a software tool in order to meet federal parity requirements that helps us to know and understand in a very equitable way across the state when folks do meet criteria for inpatient hospitalization. And we have been in the process of implementing that across eight of the ten P I H Ps for several months. What we wanted to avoid was multiple implementations of different things and really kind of overwhelming A C T teams, overwhelming the folks at Common Ground. So we've waited until that's fully implemented before we roll out the process for the A C T teams to become involved with that pre-admission screening. Realistically, if I had to set a, I hope by date at this point, it would be mid to late summer by the time we're really rolling with that process. Population health management, looking at the objectives there. We do indeed continue to modify our integrated health training plan. We have regular reports that we receive via Pro Act, which is the population health management tool that we use grant funds to purchase and maintain every year. And what that does is it gives us and generates reports of all of the major healthcare diagnoses that the folks we support are currently experiencing. And so if we don't have a current training surrounding a major healthcare diagnosis, our nurses go out, they do the research, they develop the training, and then we have that available via the YouTube channel and on our website. Of course, we're always looking to stay on top of best practices as well. So as newer emerging things come out, as the Michigan Healthcare Consortium or M Quick updates their guidelines, we make sure that we update ours as well, so that we're giving the, the best possible support out to our network. Ensuring access of healthcare for all people served. We do again have a report that comes out of that population health software that indicates whether or not someone has received a primary healthcare visit. And so there's certain ways that doctors code those visits. And then we also have an obligation as a P I H P that if someone doesn't receive a primary healthcare visit, that the provider provide a basic health screening that consists of height, weight, blood pressure, B M I, and the blood glucose or the H B A one C test. So certainly, we share both that report with the providers, but there's also dashboards where we bump up not only that report, but whether or not the person has received a basic health screening. And those are in our dashboards, and people can drill down into there as well. Using the population health data to inform prescribing practices, we did implement two protocols via our statewide work group with the Medicaid health plans, really looking at making sure we have a broader impact through that partnership. And so those protocols focused on individuals with diabetes and also individuals with C O P D, chronic obstructive pulmonary disorder. There we go, getting all my medical acronyms down as well.
Thank you.
Yes. I would also say that we have another report that comes out of that software. That's called the Behavior Pharmacy Management, or B P M, report. And our nurses host a quarterly meeting across all of our provider network, and they have all kind of picked an area or a specific measure that they wanted to focus on. So for instance, some of our S E D providers said that they really wanted to make sure that they were following up, that kids had followed up with their primary care after prescription of A D H D medication. And then a lot of our adult providers wanted to take a look at, folks prescribed opioids outside of best practice. And our providers that support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities also take a look at folks that are prescribed multiple psychotropic medications. And that can look very differently. It might be prescribing practices within that provider organization, but then it could also be the outreach and engagement of community-based providers that might be providing prescriptions to those medications as well.
Are there any questions at this point in time? We've finished the first priority, our priority area of the evening.
I don't think so.
Okay. We'll move on then to services and supports, and I'd like to talk a little bit about crisis services. Certainly, we want to improve crisis stabilization and treatment and to address emergency department usage, hospitalization, and incarceration. We have met this objective for the year by the deployment of the Children's Mobile Crisis Unit. And I am told that as of today, there are approximately one hundred sixty calls that have been taken relative to this Mobile Crisis Unit with ninety nine deployments. So this is available not only to people receiving services through our organization, but to the entire county. So we're very happy with that. We are always looking for modifications, but to date, there hasn't been a need for any major modification. So again, we've successfully met that objective. The next area is cultural competency.
Yes, so we continue to make headway and progress on our five-year plan to enhance our culturally competent services here and throughout our provider network. We are following the S A M S A guideline in terms of rolling out a five-year plan. We did meet objective one. We continue to analyze data. We've really started reaching out and establishing relationships with persons from the L G B T Q population, the deaf community, the Jewish community, and we certainly have representation from the board in terms of outreach and engagement with the African-American community as well. We've continued to share our work plan. We've reached out to the new O C H N Training Director and talked about possible training implications and things like that. Objective two, we met as well, just in terms of, again, evaluating data and looking to implement practices to improve outcomes for older adults. I do want to mention, we evaluated the data, but we did put implementation on hold for a very good reason. I was accepted into the National Council of Health Disparity Leadership Program very recently, which really focuses on health disparities across large organizations and will culminate after ten months of hard work into some type of an end product or project that increases access to care or decreases disparity somewhere. And so we really kind of wanted to put a hold on major projects until we saw how that fell out. So hopefully, we can have the National Council's support as we move forward in this area as well.
Next area has to do with employment, and there are several objectives in this area. The first objective is talking about maintaining what is called good fidelity for the Individual Placement Supports Initiative, as well as Supported Employment. I'm happy to say that all three providers for people with mental illness, adults with mental illness, have either good fidelity or exemplary fidelity, which makes us some of the best rated programs across the state. So we're very proud of the work that the contractors are doing on behalf of people served. Relative to objective two, we, as you have heard from Francisco Gamboa in the past, we do have a customized employment program. We do partner with the Michigan Rehabilitation Services to increase employment for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. That was a rather slow start, but we're starting to pick up steam, and we are seeing increased employment on behalf of people served. The next objective also has to do with increasing transitional employment positions. We have had people from the clubhouses mentored here or positioned here and have in the past, or not too distant past, hired from the clubhouses. We will continue working with the clubhouses to have positions available and assist them and support them in the employment of people served. And finally, the last objective has to do with the Home and Community-Based Services Transitional Plan. Many of you know that's the multi-year plan to move organizations across the country into greater integration and community participation. We do have increased involvement of people in the community, increased employment. Most of the organizations, or all of the organizations who have had corrective action plans have been approved and moved toward a meeting home and community-based waiver criteria. We do have several who are in what's called heightened scrutiny, and we are still awaiting the department to make some decisions in that area. We'll keep you informed of that as always. In terms of housing, we of course work very closely with Community Housing Network, and they have, relative to objective one, increased the number of affordable and stabilized housing units in Oakland County. I'm told that they have placed folks in fifty six units across the county. We do have the PATH grant, the Projects to Assist in Transition from Homelessness that continues to be supported by our organization. Within the last year, it actually has moved from direct support from our organization to Community Housing Network, so they now manage that particular grant. Shelter Plus or Shelter Care Plus Care continues to be supported through training and treatment innovations as well as Community Housing Network. And Oakland Community Health Network staff continue to participate in the Oakland County Homeless Alliance. In terms of objective three, again, that addresses the Home and Community-Based Waiver Services Transition Plan. We do have one hundred percent compliance with all the corrective action plans. If you recall, a lot of it had to do with people changing locks, making sure there weren't housing, house rules, and, and meeting various other criteria of the H C B S waiver expectations. We do again have several providers and locations under heightened scrutiny. And I will say once again, we are awaiting further direction from the department. Many of you know that it is not the prepaid inpatient health plan, our organization, that takes the lead in heightened scrutiny. It is the department and others that they've contracted with. So we will continue to work closely with the department and their contractors to meet requirements in that area. Now we have substance use prevention and treatment. Nicole talked a little earlier about the State Opioid Response Grant. We continue to have the Opioid Misuse Prevention Initiative, which actually, the Alliance for Coalition of Healthy Communities is taking the lead on the, the training and the dispensation of naloxone, or as commonly known, Narcan. And we continue to work with them and our broad community to educate people about the opioid epidemic and what treatment prevention and can be used to mitigate that epidemic. Next objective has to do with trauma-informed systems. I know that we have done training long in the past, if you will, for the networks when the substance use provider network came to our organization. Gee, almost four and a half years ago, they had not had training or work done in trauma-informed culture as well as treatment. And they have moved very rapidly into meeting all criteria in that area. So we have one hundred percent completion with that objective. And again, we talk about medication-assisted treatment, which is part of the opioid response. We have made changes to contracts, policies, and assessments. We're on the cusp of meeting integrated healthcare. We know that many of the providers where Matt is provided medication-assisted treatment. They're working with the local F Q H Cs and other physician groups to again work toward integrated healthcare. We still have some work to do, but we're moving diligently in that area. In terms of veteran services, many of you heard Shaka McDonald, our Veterans Navigator, present a number of months ago. We're so pleased to have him with us. The state has launched a multi-year strategic plan. We're nearing the end of that strategic plan. And Shaka works with our collaborative partners in the community to meet the goals and objectives of that strategic plan. So it says fifty percent complete, but let me tell you, he was hired later into the strategic plan and has done a fine job of representing the people in need of services, the military, military families, and certainly represented this organization well. In terms of transportation, also, many of you know that Mike Daley continues to lead that effort. Mike from this organization, along with a collaborative group. He has most recently been involved in the Oakland County Homeless Healthcare Collaboration Transportation Task Force. It's a mouthful. It's a subcommittee of the Homeless Coalition that is led by the Health Division in this county. They did wrap up their work. They made a recommendation that there be in the Pontiac area some shuttles to ease people's transportation. That not, has not yet been acted upon, but continues to be supported by that subgroup. That really brings us up to speed. I might also mention, relative to transportation, Mike did indicate the last time he presented to you that we have received a grant for voucher drivers for the northern part of this county as well as the southern part. So we continue to work on transportation and have had several promising conversations with the likes of Lyft and many of those transportation companies that are moving everyone into a different century of transportation. So with that, I will end our presentation and take any questions you may have on services and supports.
And then Mr. Rubin?
Couple of questions. One is about the culturally competent services. I understand that Hispanics is the third largest ethnic group in the county. Is that also included in your outreach?
When we went ahead and analyzed the data, we do see that the Hispanic population is not represented in terms of who we serve, as they are in the community as well. So we are actively engaging in outreach with, with that population as well.
And my second question is about the homeless. What are the challenges in accomplishing the, our goals in that homelessness problem in the county?
Right. Well, this one, this particular objective focused primarily on transportation. So that certainly is an issue, and for housing, of course, is, is an issue. But getting people to appointments, making sure they see not only their therapist, but their physician. see not only their therapist, but their physicians, or getting them started in healthcare tends to be a real issue for people. So, and transportation, housing, employment are issues that surround all people, and they're so intertwined. How can you have a job and create income if you don't have transportation? If you don't have those two, how do you have the money to find housing? Even though we're doing a lot of work through that homeless coalition to assist people in getting started in their homes or in their apartments so that they can take the next step toward independence.
Mr. Rubin?
First of all, thank you very much. Very aggressive program that you've all been working on. I hope that finances will allow you to complete this program. I just want to focus in on transportation. You've already mentioned transportation seems to be the hub of the spoke in the wheel to help the people we serve. I make the, get to their appointments, get around, get out of the house, get out of the, wherever they are. And yet, I keep finding out that most of our providers, transportation is a big problem for them as well, a major problem. And I can understand why it would be, because the costs of transportation, as you probably know, is astronomical. And if you don't have the funds for it, it poses a major problem for everyone, for each of them. So I don't know what the transportation program is within our organization, and it would be nice to have some sort of a presentation on that. But if you drive by a lot of providers, places, you see a lot of cars in the parking lot. And I can't say that's true for all, for everybody, but some of the major ones that I've noticed. You wonder, what if they had collaboration amongst themselves that would work towards a program of focusing in on better transportation services? Has that ever been thought of or worked on?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. As a matter of fact, we've had conversations with SMART and with, most recently with Lyft, to talk about a transportation hub where we look at all of the transportation and the costs and really talk about a deployment center so that we can look at it very differently. Part of it is teasing out the costs that are currently in the system, but also really to change the culture. We've certainly had conversations with several providers who understand that, yes, there may be what we call parallel driving, different providers driving in the same direction, to the same location, and maybe even parking at the same time. So we recognize that there's a need to better use our resources. And with the advancement of the Home and Community-Based Waiver Service Expectations and our belief that people should be in the community first and foremost, we need to have more individualized transportation so that people can go out as needed to the library, to the Y, where they're not traveling in groups of people. So, yes, we've been having some pretty intensive discussions about that, and some of it also is looking at what kind of technology is available to us or may already be used by Lyft, for instance, or Uber, any of those organizations, where people are deployed to pick up folks and take them to their need, needed location. We want to have it be a system that is as close to real-time need as possible. Right now, there are some people who can call in and make an appointment for transportation for next week. That's not exactly user-friendly, and sometimes people show up, sometimes people show up late. So, yes, thank you. We are looking at all of that as we figure out how to revamp transportation. I have to say, at this point in time, we're probably more optimistic about some of the discussions and actions that are happening around transportation than we've actually had in the past. So, it's looking good. We'll keep you informed, and I'm sure that Mike Daly would be more than happy to come and talk to you again.
Are you finished, Mr. Rubin?
Just have one follow-up. This is not a question, it's a comment. You know, somebody with authority in our field at the federal level asked me, what are some of the problems facing, you know, the normal questions that politicians ask, especially when they're running for office? And I mentioned transportation. And then the question came up, she asked if we ever tried getting any monies from the Department of Transportation, directly from the federal government. I didn't know the answer to that, but apparently, the comment was followed up by, you know, it is available. I don't know how you get it, I don't know how you apply, and if it's available, how come nobody, how come everybody's not jumping on the train?
Several providers have submitted grants, and a lot in the past, that tends to be for purchase of a vehicle. So we do have providers out there who they've received grants to outright purchase vehicles. We have recently worked with SMART. They've named us as a partner, if you will, a collaborator in one of their grants where they did receive money. So we will be working with them in the future around the very things that we discussed, and how do you use transportation better? How do you have more real-time transportation for people? How do you use our funding, our declining funding better, quite frankly?
Yeah.
Other questions?
I had a couple. I wanted to go back to the crisis unit. Do you happen to know what the hours of operation are for that?
I have to think. I believe it's, I want to say 10 o'clock?
ICSS or the...
Mobile Crisis.
Mobile Crisis for Children.
Yeah, I want to say it's still 10.
We do not fund a 24-hour crisis unit at this point in time, although there are some providers who received CCBHC grant funding, which is...
Certified Community Behavioral Health Centers.
Thank you. Flipped from my mind, and they are contracting with Common Ground to do that through the CCBHC programs.
They'll be able to take up the slack when the mobile crisis unit isn't available?
That would be for not just youth, children, but all people who are in need of services.
My next question was about, pardon me, the transitional employment positions available at the clubhouses. How do people find out about the positions in order to apply for them? Or are we reaching out to all the clubhouses and saying, "We have so many positions, apply"? Because I didn't know we were doing this.
I don't have that information specifically, but I can certainly work to get you that answer.
And along with that, as a follow-up, are the drop-ins excluded from that, or would they be included also?
We, to my knowledge, we've had no discussion with the dropout centers regarding that.
All right.
But certainly we'll follow up on that, too, to make certain.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then with, there was one other question. With the Narcan trainings, I've seen them scattered around the county, and I was just curious, how were the locations chosen? Because it doesn't seem to me, when I look at the offerings, that there's enough availability in the higher areas that have the higher problems. I don't know if ACHC just says, "We're gonna go in this area, this area, this area," or if they're using data to make the selections, but it seems like to me, if the areas that have the hardest-hit problems with the opioids would be on the list to get the training.
I'm certain they provide training when asked, and they provide training to law enforcement and to various communities, but we can get the data around the highest need and what kind of training has been offered, as well as what is scheduled and how it's scheduled.
Okay, thank you. I think that was all for me.
You're welcome. Good question.
Oh, one more, I'm sorry. Back to transportation.
I hope you realize that I'm maybe the Renaissance person here. I don't know all the detail on a lot of these.
I know.
So we'll add that to the presentation list or follow-up list.
Thank you.
I'll try.
With the transportation, the task force made the recommendations to who about the shuttles? Where did that report go?
It was, by understanding, to the city of Pontiac.
Okay, so it's at the cities?
Yes.
You may have to make a determination what to do with that report?
Yep.
Okay, that's good to know for me as a Pontiac resident.
It is indeed.
Thank you. And I think that's all of my questions.
All right, thank you so much. We had a very robust strategic plan, and as you can see, a very full FY '18. As we move into '19, well, into '19 now, we'll have more to report to you, but a lot of these areas are carryovers, and so you have already heard some updated reports from people in our organization, and you will continue to do so. We'll work our way through the FY '19 annual plan, so by the time we get to September, we'll have an opportunity to maybe just provide a synopsis on what's been happening this year. Thank you so much for supporting us.
Thank you for an excellent report. Our next speaker is Christine Burke with the Advocacy Work Group Update.
How are you?
Hello, doing well.
As you know, last year, when we were working on the three-year strategic plan and the annual plan, one of our initiatives surrounded, was around advocacy. We wanted to enhance and improve the involvement of the people we serve and their loved ones, as well as other stakeholders. In doing so, we reenacted the Advocacy Work Group. We sent out invitations to about 1,200 people, and we promoted the event on social media. We promoted it with press releases and different flyers and sent invitations and flyers to about 1,200 people. One of the things we tried to do, we wanted to make it as easy as possible for people. We created an online registration, and we encouraged them to pick one subject that was of the most value and importance to them, and then a second where they might want to assist or help. We invited them to attend our first meeting in November. We had about 75 or 80 people in attendance, which really, for us, we were very excited to see that number of people. Those who could not attend contacted us via email, so we added them to list for future meetings. The work group subcommittees that people were asked to choose from, based on what we hear from people as being a priority in their life, were the direct care, professional shortage, employment, housing, privatization, and transportation. I always list everything alphabetically so that nobody thinks I am putting a priority over any of the, any of the subcommittees. During our first meeting, we broke up into five work group sessions. We had two groups in this room, then we reserved three other conference rooms. We asked people to help us develop the messaging. I really felt strongly, and each of us did, that we did not put words in people's mouths. We asked them, "If you were going to say something to a legislator or a leader in your community about what is important to you, what you want to see in the service delivery, just put it down in paper, and we'll modify it and edit it and then bring it back for you to review." So they shared ideas. We talked about creating a website resource tool that would be accessible to all of the subcommittee and work group members, but also to the community. We held our second meeting in February. During that meeting, we had not, at that time, posted the messaging in the community. We really did want to bring back everything that we had gathered from the first meeting and let the work groups review it in case we missed something or we needed to make any changes. We did, however, have the advocacy page created so that they could review that with us, let us know if we were missing any information. That includes contact information for legislators, it includes newspaper articles, special events, links to other websites that might have valuable information. Most importantly, we had created a community calendar, and we had talked about this in the first meeting. What could we do to make this process easy for everyone so that they didn't get advocacy fatigue? And part of that was the communications calendar. We had decided as a group that each month would be designated for one of the topics. We would take the messaging, and then we would ask people to share the posts and the messaging on their own social media sites. If they wanted to, they could email their legislators, or they could call whatever they felt the most comfortable, including writing people. We've had the website in place now for a few months. We wanted to see if people were receiving information, so a few weeks ago, we sent out a survey just to ask, "Are you using the information? Are you receiving the information? Is there anything we should do differently?" We plan to bring that information back to the group during our next meeting, which is May 21st. And if you have an opportunity, you should attend. The first meeting, we separated. The second meeting, everybody wanted to stay in this room, which really creates a lot of great energy and positive reinforcement about the work we do and about supporting people we serve. And the group itself is very diverse, and so the input and the opinions and the discussion is robust, as Kathleen would say. And I think people leave and they feel empowered, which is really what we want to happen during these work group meetings. Any questions?
Ms. Kajeryk.
How did you determine who was the 1,200 that received the information to come in?
We have an email list that we keep. There's probably 1,200 on it, so that includes people who belong to the CAC or any of our advocacy work groups. We also have a subscription on our website, and people can go to that and they can say, "I would like to get information for this list and that list." So probably, we have about 40-something different lists, and we call that sending it to everybody and their brother.
Any other questions for Christine or Ms. Burke? Okay, thank you. You have another presentation for us?
I was asked to do another presentation for you. This month is Autism Awareness Month, and as I've mentioned in the past, we celebrate the months and recognize them in different manners. One of the ways I wanted to start this month, you see people walking around with a ribbon a lot, and I know individuals recognize it as being associated with autism, but I found this description of the ribbon, which I thought was very helpful in creating awareness and making people feel engaged and interested and knowledgeable when they're talking about autism and about the different activities that our community is engaged in to help create awareness and inclusion. These are just some of the images we found online, in different ways that people help identify the uniqueness of individuals without labeling them. Plans that we had for April, we did send press releases out to all of the local media. We have a whole list of social media posts scheduled. We have a whole list of social media posts scheduled throughout the month. We planned a Wear Blue on Autism Awareness Day, which I believe was May 2nd. It's the first Monday of the month. We were going to do ribbons, but we ended up doing little notepads with the autism ribbon on it that we passed out to people. We also posted on our intranet, we found a quick 20-minute quiz that you could take, course you could take, about autism. And really, all of these activities are intended to help people more aware in terms of being supportive, in terms of understanding autism, and again, preventing people from being labeled. I think you have a really cool picture. I'm thinking this is the wrong slide because we, there were a couple pictures up there of our staff. So everyone here wore blue. And we took a staff photo, and then everybody at the RCC wore blue. And then we sent the images to the local newspapers. Sometimes they use it. Last year, they used it. This year, they didn't. But we did post it up on our intranet for everyone to see. It's a lot of fun. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. One of the young ladies that works in Supportive Employment at CNS is a mother of a child with autism. And this month, she started writing articles on Facebook, very detailed articles about her life raising her son. He's in middle school now. She wrote a book about him when he was four years old, and it's very, very moving. And she's very articulate. So if you can look at Keisha Jones, K.I.E.S.H.A. Jones on Facebook, you'll see her posts.
I know Keisha.
Yeah.
I will look for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, we have Dr. Lawson back with Sentinel Events Review Committee. Thank you, Christine. It's not just Dr. Lawson. We have Dr. Rosen and Marquita Massey joining her. Thank you.
Hello again.
Hello.
We are going to present on our work and our role as members of the Sentinel Event Review Committee this evening. So we wanted to go ahead and get started by just going over some basic definitions. You'll get much more in-depth information on these definitions as we move through our presentation this evening. But I thought it was important that we all had a shared understanding of what some of these terms mean. Starting with an incident report. An incident report is a written account of anything unusual or unfortunately bad that happens to a person that we support. And we are required by our contract with MDHHS to complete those. There are several types of incident reports, so they can be categorized as different incidents. One is a risk event, which can be defined as something that might put a person at risk of harm. So for example, an emergency medical treatment due to illness. Then you have a critical incident, and that is also referred to as a critical event or a critical issue. Critical is kind of the important word. Those are all synonymous terms. But that is an incident that puts an individual at substantial risk of harm. So you could think of someone's arrest or emergency medical treatment due to injury are examples of critical incidences. And then we have immediately reportable events. And those events, we are contractually obligated to report to the Department of Health and Human Services. Examples of an immediately reportable event would be a suicide death or any death that is under investigation by a police department licensing or our recipient rights department here. We are obligated to report those to the department within 48 hours of us becoming aware of that event. We are also then obligated to report to the department any event or knowledge that we become aware that a staff member through action or inaction is no longer eligible for federal billing. So if they're on a Medicaid exclusion list or something like that. We then have a sentinel event. And that's just an unanticipated event that may have been prevented. So if there was a gap in training or a gap in services or supports, something can be deemed sentinel. And then we have root cause analysis or RCA. And that's just a method of problem solving that takes a look at all of the various factors that may have gone into an event occurring, looking to identify not only the root cause of what led to that event, but then also what are steps that could be taken to prevent that event from occurring again in the future. Okay. So who is this CERC or this Sentinel Event Review Committee? Really, it's the culmination of a lot of hard work across four various teams to make everything come together. So again, you'll get more in-depth explanations as to everyone's role on the committee, but we thought it was important to just acknowledge everyone. So from the clinical team, we have the administrative and special projects coordinator, the clinical analysts, the clinical supervisor, and then myself. Vicky Suter, as our Director of Rights and Advocacy, also sits on the committee. Certainly, Dr. Rosen as our medical director. And then the quality team, Marquita, as the director, as well as several quality analysts that all work very hard to make sure that we're doing what we need to do in terms of Sentinel Event Review. So we thought we would walk you through the process of how everything happens. And so the whole Sentinel Event Review process begins with the completion of an incident report. So providers either complete the report in ODIN, or they complete a paper form that is faxed to our recipient rights team, who then uploads that into ODIN. Every single IR in our system is reviewed both by recipient rights to determine whether or not an investigation should take place. And then it is also reviewed by the special projects or administrative coordinator that sits on the clinical team here. The administrative and special projects coordinator, we're going to start talking about that process. I'm sure Vicky or Jean or ORR could talk about their process in terms of investigation. But for the purposes of this presentation, we're only going to focus on what goes to the Sentinel Event Review Committee. So the admin or special projects coordinator takes a look at that IR and determines, is it a risk event, an immediately reportable event, or a critical incident, and then routes it accordingly. So immediately reportable events are reported to the department. They are reported to a team of folks internal to OCHN. And they are also assigned to a clinical analyst to do a comprehensive clinical review. Critical incidents are also routed to, can you go back to? Critical incidents are also then routed to clinical analysts, and risk events are routed to Marquita's team. So as you can see, we have some longitudinal data for you there. And we receive about 20,000 incident reports for review each and every year. So that works out to about 1,600 per month or 56 per day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, that we receive. If you can go to the next slide. So we're halfway through FY '19, and we have just over 9,000. So we are on track for about a typical amount of IRs filed this year. So of the about 1,600 IRs we get each month or incident reports, you can see the average immediately reportable events that we receive in any given month. So the data you're looking at right now is longitudinal, representative of fiscal year 16 through present. So this is a long-term average. Thankfully, you can see, we don't get a lot of these, but we do get something every single month. So looking at so far in FY '19, what we've received in terms of immediately reportable events, there was, in quarter one, you can see that there were three events, and that consisted of one investigative death and two suicide deaths that were reported and reviewed. And in quarter two of those two instances, there was one investigative death and one suicide death that was reported and reviewed. So again, once the event is classified as immediately reportable, it is reported and then routed for an in-depth and comprehensive clinical review. The clinical analyst will go and take a long-term look back in someone's record and really just identify and make sure that engagement and outreach and appropriate service provision and clinical best practice essentially was followed and provided to that person. They will then take that report and take it to our committee meeting, which Dr. Rosen will get into more in-depth in just a few slides. So like I had mentioned earlier, when something then is deemed a risk event, that is sent over to Marquita's team. So she's going to talk to us about their process.
The risk event reporting category is something that's relatively new in the department's contract with us. When I say that it's relatively new, it's probably been about the most recent six years. And it was developed to be able to make, to ensure that PIHPs had a process to address incidents that didn't quite rise to the level of a sentinel event, but it was still something, an adverse situation that needed to be addressed. And most often, it involves vulnerable persons. So several years ago, a work group convened by the state, and they identified certain categories that would qualify as risk events. And those are the categories that are up there. Taking a look from that, you can see that staff calls to police is the highest reporting category of risk events. Primarily, these occur in residential sites. And this would only qualify as reporting category when the staff working in the home actually made the call. The category that speaks to hospitalizations, the M41 category, a critical, a risk event is identified when an individual has been hospitalized two or more times in a 12-month period. So that's the second highest reporting category. The category M38 is for individuals that have not, that have only had one hospitalization. So the next slide talks about risk events. It gives us the stats for where we are for the first quarter of FY '19 and the second quarter of FY '19. So you can see from looking at this data that we have a slight drop from quarter two as compared to quarter one. And what the data also shows us is that you don't have FY '18 here. But I can report that the statistics for FY '18 are about the same as what we've seen for FY '19.
So on the screen, you can see then a list of critical incidents similar to, but separate from, immediately reportable events. So in any average month, we have right around 66 critical incidents that are routed to clinical analysts who conduct the same kind of comprehensive clinical chart review that they do with immediately reportable events. And then they bring those to the Sentinel Event Review Committee meeting every week. And so there's our longitudinal. Again, that's from FY '16 now. Those are averages per month. So you can see emergency medical treatment due to injury is the highest report. And that really does span a large continuum. So that could be someone that has a result of, say, self-injurious behavior, or they get into a fight with someone. But personally, I also saw one where someone was playing basketball and twisted their ankle and had to go to urgent care. And so it really can span a continuum of serious to perhaps more just day-to-day injuries that any of us would sustain. And so looking at the FY '19 current critical incidents that we have, you can see in quarter one, we had 34, 23 in quarter two. So just a breakdown, in quarter one, there were two deaths, 21 emergency medical treatment due to self-injurious behavior, one hospitalization due to self-injurious behavior, and 21 suicide attempt incident reports that were reviewed. In quarter two, we had one death, 18 emergency medical treatment due to self-injurious behavior, one hospitalization due to self-injurious behavior, and 10 suicide attempt incident reviews that were taken a look at. And so what I do want to note, though, is in these breakdowns, they're not necessarily a distinct count of individual people. Because of the way IR reporting is, if anyone is present or aware of the incident, you are obligated to complete the IR. And so it's similar to mandated reporting, and you'd rather have multiple people filing an incident report than no one filing an incident report. So it's not uncommon sometimes for us to get two or possibly even three incident reports for the same individual person, just depending on the nature of the incident and how many staff were there when that occurred. Dr. Rosen is going to talk about how all this culminates now at the Sentinel Event Review Committee meetings.
I want to begin by saying, when I came on board in 2003, one of my first experiences here was to participate in a Sentinel Event Review Committee. And it was very powerful because I didn't think I was ready to hear what was happening because unfortunately, adverse events occur, and too often, those adverse events are suicides or premature death. So when an 85-year-old person dies or a 90-year-old person dies, it's a tragedy. It's a sad event for a family. But when you're reviewing cases and it's an 18-year-old, it's a 16-year-old, or it's a 48-year-old, almost always, you look through the chart and see there are holes, there are deficiencies. And if we could intervene, that maybe that premature death would not have happened. So today, we're much more aware of the number of deaths because of the opioid crisis, and it's on the front page of newspapers. But back in 2003, it was kind of a secret. People didn't realize that more people were dying from suicide than all the people who have died in all our wars. But let's focus on what actually happens at our Sentinel Event Review Committee meetings. So we do, we meet weekly, and the participants at that meeting are clinical analysts, and we also have a member of the substance use disorder team present. And then Vicky Suter, Director of Recipient Rights, also participates. And of course, the purpose of the meeting is to determine whether a sentinel event has occurred. And just to review that definition, what is a sentinel event? And it's an unexpected occurrence involving the death or serious psychological or physical injury to a person. And we determine whether a sentinel event has occurred by reviewing the medical record. And if there's a death, we also review the death certificate provided to us by the county. If we determine that a sentinel event has occurred, then we ask the core provider agency to do a root cause analysis. And then they, the core provider agency, will submit that report to us. We review it. If we accept it, that's good. But sometimes, that root cause analysis doesn't meet our expectations, so that we ask, we go back to them and ask them to rework that root cause analysis till they can identify the important issues or what might have been missed in the care of that individual. So we can go to the next graphic. So what is a root cause analysis? Well, the root cause analysis process requires us to look at, actually requires the core provider agency, that agency that's been taking care of that individual, to look at the events that may have contributed to that adverse event, to identify what the causal factors have been. And then, most importantly, to come up with an action plan to reduce the likelihood of this happening again. So we try to do this in a collegial way, but we're not blaming or criticizing our core provider agencies. We're trying to work together to educate them, to make sure that the best evidence practice is in place. And we're educating them and other core providers and ourselves so that we can make the system work better.
Just to add a little to what Dr. Rosen reported on in regards to the Sentinel Event Review Committee. For fiscal year '18, we, the expectation in regards to a root cause analysis For fiscal year 18, we, the expectation in regards to a root cause analysis is that the provider convenes their own Sentinel Event Review Committee, and they really are expected to do a deep dive into what happened with the situation and to try to identify the causal factors. When they receive requests from OCHN to conduct a root cause analysis, the expectation is that it is returned back to us within 30 days. For fiscal year 18, we had 22 Sentinel Events identified for the year, and of the 22, only two were exceeded the 30-day timeframe. When that happens, most often, the provider has asked us for an extension. They are asking for more time to complete the RCA. We also talked about, Dr. Rosen talked about what happens when a root cause analysis is submitted and is not accepted the first time. So just to share some data with you for fiscal year 18. For fiscal year 18, we had 17 of the 22. 17 were approved and accepted on the initial submission. Five were returned for revision. The primary reason for returning these root cause analysis for revision is because there was not a descriptive enough measure of effectiveness. The measure of effectiveness is what we expect the provider to be able to explore, to tell us, how do they know? And how can we be assured that the actions that they've taken are going to actually reduce the likelihood of this occurring again? So for example, what we often would see in RCA root cause analysis responses is that they're going to train the staff to, on an issue. So training in itself is good, but how do you know that the training was actually effective and is actually going to work? So what a good measure of effectiveness would be as a next step to follow training would be to do a post-test of staff, to make sure they retained that information. Also, to do a case review of a certain percentage of records to make sure that the cases that are reviewed in your, in the sample that the provider selects, that they actually reflect that the training information provided is actually reflected in the records of the person served. So the form for the root cause analysis is in Odin, so that makes it really good for us. It's easy for us to generate reports and to be able to categorize what's happening with the RCAs and to identify trends. This slide here talks about risk events. And in fiscal year 18, we had 680 risk events. The 61% of those were in the category of staff calls to police, and the majority of those occurred in residential and, or CLS providers, provider-operated homes. The primary reason that in reviewing the risk events, what we're seeing, well, let me back up a bit. Prior to FY18, the risk event root cause analysis process was handled by the core providers. So when an incident happened, the core provider was asked to complete the RCA. Starting with fiscal year 19, as OCHN now holds the contracts for specialized residential sites and sites that are providing CLS services, staff here are completing the root cause analysis and determining what causal factors were involved in the situation. What we're finding in many instances is that crisis plans are in need of improvement. There could be training for the staff in the residential sites on the implementation of the crisis plans, or just more specific detail providing that in the crisis plans. Some of the other categories that could be identified as causal factors would be communication or staff-related issues. Another example is that we're seeing that in some instances, plans may be more restrictive than they should be. For example, a plan may state that if John does X, then John may not be able to have community access, which in itself is a rights violation. So when we see those sort of things, we report those instances to recipient rights. Recipient rights would have already, in most cases, already opened these types of situations for rights reviews and rights investigations.
As Dr. Rosen had mentioned, when we meet every week, the meetings are powerful, and quite frankly, they're not pleasant to sit and talk about gaps in services or bad things that happen to vulnerable people. And sometimes, oftentimes, feels like a very passive process. And passive is not a word I would use to describe us as a group, per se. And so we really started talking about, how can we get out in front of this? How can we start trying to prevent some of these things from happening to the people that we support? So to that end, when we really started digging through some of the risk events and critical incidences and immediately reportable events, what we found is there were often many, many incident reports that never rose to that level that preceded the ones that did rise to that level. And so we worked very closely with our IT team to further kind of flush out our dashboards. So now what happens is when any individual that we support has 10 or more incident reports filed on their behalf within a 30-day period, we are alerted via email on the clinical team, and it prompts a clinical review. In the course of that clinical review, we look, again, for the same similar things. Are there gaps? Are the, you know, who's struggling, kind of what's going on? And then we'll reach out to the core provider, and we offer support. We discuss any kind of gaps that we might have found, all in an effort to try and prevent things from escalating for that individual. That's only started within the past several months, so we don't particularly have any data that we've been able to collect that says that it reduces the number of risk or critical incidents. But certainly, I've noted, it's been incredibly helpful for, at least the clinical folks in that they feel empowered and that they feel like we're doing something to try and head some of this off instead of Monday morning quarterbacking, sometimes, if you would.
Of course, the, what our goal is, of course, is that the impact that we have on the people we serve is that outcomes are better. And the, the root cause analysis helps us identify what might be gaps in care. And then we're in a position to think about what might fill those gaps and how, in fact, care in our system is actually improved and that quality of life is improved, and the rates of self-destructive behaviors decrease, and incidents involving police and restraint and all the situations that are so traumatic and potentially dangerous for people get addressed. So the, if we can go to the next slide.
We have a policy on Sentinel Events. It's available to the, our network and to the public. The core providers follow the policy, or the policy is reviewed annually. We, and revisions and updates are made to the policy as needed. We also have procedures for risk events. Who does what, when? The process that I described outlined that. What I did not mention, I need to mention this as well, when staff within quality are reviewing the risk events, if it is an issue that arises from a residential site, then staff here are able to directly contact the residential site to try to understand what happened and to ask them to identify causal factors. Core providers are still provide, are still involved in risk events if it requires a need to make revisions to an IPOs or to a crisis plan. And if staff here in the review of risk events find that there are questions about clinical issues or clinical concerns, then that request is shipped over to the clinical team, for the clinical team to do a review, and if need be, to consult with the core provider agency with a clinical concern. And our outcomes on the risk event process and on the Sentinel Event Process are reported annually in our QPIP that's presented to the board.
So I've been asked to talk about funding impact, and I'm not, I'm not a financial person. I see myself as a physician and a psychiatrist and a clinician. But I think when you, when you talk about human capital, that the work we do in this Sentinel Event Process, as we risk, as we reach out to high-risk people, that we are not only improving quality of life, but we're saving lots of money. So I like to use the analogy of a dam or a dike, and there's a little crack, maybe a little hole. And of course, you want to call in the engineers and the construction people to patch that crack or hole. Because if you don't, and it should cost money to patch that crack, but if you don't, and two months later, the dam breaks, and the town next to the dam is now flooded and millions of dollars in damage, but also loss of life and suffering as people's homes have been washed away. And if only you had patched that crack, the savings would be enormous. And I view the, this whole Sentinel Event Review Process as not just fixing the crack, but even when there's a little crack, that we're looking at what might be going on that's putting stress on the system. And we know that as we reach out to these high-risk individuals, that we can make a difference, and that saves not only, not only improving quality of life, we're saving an enormous amount of money because we know that from our outcomes review committee and how, how many dollars can be saved, even though we spend hours of time sitting around a table, talking about the problems of the people presented to us.
Dr. Taub, then Dr. Klatsch, and Dr. Hans.
Just a bookkeeping question. When you're following suicide attempts, do you include in that suicide gestures? Or do you?
Yes. Anything that could be classified is in there.
Any self-destructive behavior can be viewed as a, as a suicide attempt, but clinicians use their judgment here. So someone can be drinking too much, but that's not an attempt to kill themselves. But as you, as you assess the situation, you get a pretty good idea that this person was not only drinking too much, he was taking too many pills and was behaving in other ways that tell you that this was a suicide attempt.
Yes. Are there some risk events that are more common than others? Does there tend to be a trend that, for example, some of it's more behavioral as opposed to emotional or involves fights? What are the trends?
Well, the risk events that we've been reviewing most recently since OCHN has taken over the responsibility for directly reviewing, they seem to be behavioral. And where there needs to be a little more, there's room for improvement in the crisis plan.
On the average, how many clinical reviews do you do a month?
We do them for other reasons, so I have a total in my head, and I'm trying to parse it out just for Sentinel Events. I would say per month, to Sentinel Events, probably around 80. And that's across four clinicians.
The, the alert that you guys get when, I think, five IRs for an individual are, are found within a 30-day period? What helped you arrive at the number of five over a 30-day period?
It's 10, so it's even, it's even higher. Really, we kind of took a look at the vast majority of the higher-level immediately reportable events and the critical incidents. And then we tried to take a look at about how many IRs had been previously filed for those folks before they had an event that hit that level. Hopefully, as we go on and as we can make an impact, we can include a risk event in that number. But if had we included risk events, we could not have, we didn't have the human resources to do that level of review.
Are there any other questions? Kathleen?
So much for the update. I know that a lot of times, we look at individual issues. That is the purpose of the Sentinel Event Committee. But we really look at systems change also. And when we push individual root cause analysis to core provider organizations, that we do ask other systems changes there. But I also want people to know that that plays back to us as an organization. And so we say, what do we need to do as we look at all of this to build capacity among staff and across the entire provider network to meet the needs of people? So I don't want to leave the impression that this is, even though it's one person at a time that we look at, but there is aggregate information that we learn and discuss not only with each core provider organization or other organizations, but that we need to take a look at ourselves and how do we do the system shift, the system change on behalf of all the people that we mutually support. I do have to say, I haven't been to the Sentinel Event Committee meetings in a while, but, you know, some of my early experiences as we shifted into integrated health care was certainly taking a look at, is there coordination with the primary care physician or the medical home? Then it really started shifting into co-occurring situations. Was it recognized that the person had a substance use concern? And are we addressing both of those? So there was cultural, work-cultural shifts, treatment shifts, and we will continue to look at that across all of the work that we do.
Ms. Kachery.
Who then goes to the core provider to say, here's what we've identified, and here's where we think is maybe a hole that can be fixed, or the patch can be put on the dam? Who does that, and how is it received?
The clinical analysts develop questions with input from the Sentinel Event Review Committee that are final approved by Dr. Rosen and I. And then the, like Marquita had mentioned, the RCA is an actual module in Odin, and so we load that in there, and it generates an email out to the core provider. Generally, that information is fairly well-received. It's a process that we've been doing for many, many years now. I think some instances can be trickier than others, just depending on the nature of the incident. Sometimes, it's very sensitive. And so even though we make every effort to go forward with a no-blame, no-shame type of approach, sometimes because an incident is so sensitive, it can be hard to be on the receiving end of one of those requests. Like Marquita said, we've done a lot of work with our core provider network around what are the expectations for an RCA? What are we looking at you to give back to us? What are good measures of effectiveness so that we can be comfortable? That, you know, we're doing the best that we can to get out in front of some of these things. And you can see by, over the years, we have approved more and more on the first submission instead of sending them back. And so it's gotten better as time goes on. I'd say it's fairly good overall.
What I would comment on is, I remember when we were first involved in this, when I got first involved in this, before we had an electronic health record, that we couldn't look at what was going on. We had to request paper reports from our core provider agencies. And very often, that would take weeks or months before we finally sorted it out. By the time we sorted it out, very often, the people who might have been involved in the process weren't even working at that core provider agency. And today, we get that information promptly, and things move very quickly.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Our second opportunity for public comment. Cummings?
This is working? Yeah. Fred Cummings, President of Lance Vermile, O'Conne. Comment on the annual strategic plan. I see 100% success at collecting data, initiating training, maybe change a process, improve a practice. My question is, well, so what? What was the impact on the people you serve? You collected some data, you made a decision. You successfully collected the data, but so what? You maybe did some training, so what? You put a lot of energy into this, but was it worth it? When you talk about measurable results, we mean measuring the consequences. Now, my analogy is, okay, you're in the business of producing a product, and your marketing people go out and do a great campaign, spend a lot of money, a lot of advertising, and so on. Do you sell any more product? The campaign was a success? No. If you didn't improve the end result, it was not a success. What you've done is successfully rearranged the deck chairs.
I think, Ms. Cummings, you'll be receiving a response in writing in the next 30 days. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make public comment at this time? I don't see anyone. Are there any board comments? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.